Good evening, everyone, and thank you for tuning into the 2022 Hamilton County School Board debates. My name is Carrie Randolph, and I'm the Executive Director of Chattanooga 2.0. In 2015, Chattanooga 2.0 started as a movement to transform education and workforce development outcomes from birth to career. We've since grown to a community-wide network of organizations collaborating across sectors, working to ensure that children and youth in Hamilton County have access to quality education and career opportunities to help them realize their full potential. I'd like to thank our partners, the Chattanooga Times Free Press and Local 3 News, for co-hosting these critically important debates alongside us. I'd also like to thank our District 8 candidates Larry Groan and Katie Perkins for participating in this important conversation this evening and for their interest in serving on behalf of students, families, and teachers on the Hamilton County School Board. Our candidates answered some candidate profile questions and an educational equity questionnaire ahead of tonight's debate. If you'd like to learn more, visit chat2, that's C-H-A-T-T-the-number-two.org/vote. Chattanooga 2.0 was born out of a recognition that strong educational outcomes, birth through career, are essential to our community's economic growth and progress and require community-wide commitment and action. We believe that strong leadership at all levels of the educational system is necessary to our success as a community, and we recognize just how important these races are during today's challenging times and into the future. Thank you again for joining us. Thank you again, candidates, for your willingness to serve our community in such a vital way. And without any further ado, it is my pleasure to introduce David Carroll of Local 3 News and Allison Schirck of the Chattanooga Times Free Press, who will be moderating this evening's debate. David and Allison?
Thank you, Carrie. Candidates, also thank you for being here. Allison and I will go over the rules of the debate for our candidates and our viewers. Both candidates will leave their cameras and microphones on at all times during the debate. Each candidate is given two minutes to make an opening statement. Allison and I will then alternate asking several questions. Two of the questions will be presented by stakeholders living in District 8. At the end, each candidate will pose a question of their choosing to their opponent. Each candidate will be given one minute to respond to each question and an optional 30-second rebuttal if they feel, we feel, if it's appropriate. When there are 15 seconds left, you'll hear a little ding or some sort of sound, and a time notice screen will flash. Time begins when the candidate begins speaking. Once time has expired at the end of an answer, the moderator could choose to allow a candidate to complete a sentence, but the candidate cannot start anew. Thought. Allison?
Each candidate will be given two minutes to make a closing statement. Moderators may ask candidates to clarify a statement or explain any acronym when needed. Candidates may not use the Internet, cellphone, or any other outside assistance to answer questions during the debate. And the goal of the debate tonight is to introduce the candidates of District 8 and their platforms. There is no winner or loser. Candidates will conduct themselves in a respectful manner and not use derogatory language. And we will start with opening statements in alphabetical order and then alternate to answers first. Candidates, do you have any questions?
No, ma'am.
All right. We will go ahead and get started. Larry, you are up first. You have two minutes to make your opening statement.
Well, I want to thank Times Free Press and Local 3 News and Chattanooga 2.0 in hosting these debates. Fifteen years ago, my wife and I chose Chattanooga to retire to. And almost immediately, I got involved in both the community and politics. I retired. When we moved here, I had been involved in education for 22 years, 18 as a teacher in middle school and high school, social studies and sciences. I even did three years of math in middle school. In Chattanooga, I served on Chattanooga City Council from 2013 through 2017, and I was a mayoral candidate in 2017. I have a master's degree in curriculum and instruction. My thesis was on the reliability of classroom materials, especially textbooks and supplemental materials. So I've been a baseball coach, basketball coach, chess coach. I have tremendous experience in the classroom, having taught in eight different schools in seven different districts throughout three states because of my wife's military career. That experience is essential. It's not something you can learn through osmosis. It's just like competition in baseball, for example, unless you step into the batter's box and experience that pitcher throwing baseball that you, it's really difficult to get that experience. You can't read about it. You just have to be in the trenches and do that. So I think I'm uniquely qualified to serve on the school board with all this background. And thank you for watching, everyone.
All right. Thank you, Larry. Katie, you have two minutes to make your opening statement.
Hi, everybody. I am Katie Perkins, and I am running for school board in District 8. I am a mom of three and a lifelong Hamilton County resident who was raised by a kindergarten teacher. I volunteer at my church, Christ United Methodist Church, and I coach volleyball and basketball at the YMCA. I am very involved in my kids' schools, and I participate in the local food drives. I am a former preschool teacher and substitute teacher. I have a bachelor's degree from UTC and a master's in fine art. I am running for school board because not long ago, I stayed awake with my seven-year-old who was crying because he was scared to go to school. He was scared to go to school because they were having an intruder drill. He practiced the drill at school. His teacher told him about it. He was terrified to go to school because he realized that school could be an unsafe place. So the next day, he did not go to school. But since I've decided to run for school board, he decided that he was going to make a list for me about things he wanted at his school. And like any typical seven-year-old, he had more candy and ice cream parties on his list. But the number-one thing on his list was no scary things at school. We cannot send our children to schools that are unsafe. Thank you.
Thank you, Katie. Our first question is related to school safety. And Larry, you'll be able to answer first on this round. School safety is on the minds of Tennesseans after the Uvalde, Texas, school shooting. Hamilton County Schools is investing $950,000 to put security officers in every school, and the Hamilton County Commission has voted to add another $1 million. Is that enough? And if not, what other measures should be taken?
Well, safety has always been an issue at schools. I was actually teaching in Denver Metro when Columbine took place. So I'm fully aware of the impact that we had. We were 12 miles away across town, and we were locked down for four hours. So I know the district is putting a lot of money into making sure that our exterior openings of our schools are monitored. We're looking towards having a monitoring system that when the bell rings to start classes, that we'll have a monitoring system that will indicate and raise an alarm if there happens to be an exterior door which is open. So the school district, we're spending the money we need at the time. Of course, Uvalde is just another example of making sure that our schools are safe from outside. But we're making sure that our schools, at this point in time, are secure. Now, the biggest problem we have is are they secure on the inside? Do we have, do we have a proper learning environment for our students? And we can speak to that issue later, but we have a huge discipline problem within our schools.
Katie?
Okay, I'm going to start this one by saying that school shootings have not always been an issue. Yes, those safety officials have recently been issued for each school, which is part of the bigger picture. The next step would be to hire these officials. But so many things encompass school safety right now. We have the infrastructure that's decaying. We have bullying. We have COVID, and we have shootings. So all of those things encompass school safety. And we need to remember that we are all in this together and that we put a lot of trust in the system. So we need to keep an open communication between all of us, and parents need to have the communication with their children. And parents need to have a relationship with the teachers and students. And we have to make sure that we, that our students feel safe and parents feel safe sending their kids to school.
All right. Thank you. Allison?
Thank you both. Katie, the second question goes to you first, and it touches on an issue that you just briefly touched on, school bullying. It's a worldwide issue that threatens students' health and can take on various forms, including verbal, physical, relational, and cyber bullying. What steps would you take as a school board member to reduce or prevent bullying in your district?
Okay. Well, I think that every school first needs to have a plan, a discipline plan. We need to go back to the beginning and start from the root and teach kindness and make sure that our youngest learners are feeling safe in school and that their needs are being met intellectually, emotionally, physically. So anyway, with a discipline plan, there needs to be a plan in place, and strategies need to be explained, and expectations need to be met with those strategies. And the teachers would need training for these strategies. So the staff needs to be equipped with the tools that they need to elevate the students.
Okay. Larry, your chance?
Well, we already have a plan in place. It's called a student code of behavior. And the problem that our school district is experiencing now is that the administrators are not following our district code of behavior. Different administrators at different schools are following totally different policies. If a student moves from one school to another school, there may be a different policy in place. The school board has had continuing discussions with the administrators about why the student behavior code of conduct is not being enforced. A lot of it is in regard to restorative justice, which I can understand. You don't want to suspend or expel students because they're probably going to be unattended at home, possibly. The best place for them is in school, but how do we handle the situation? And it's a multifaceted problem. The school district is trying to address this issue with social-emotional learning. But if you have an unsafe environment, then social-emotional learning cannot work. And you can't, if a student is a victim and tries to defend themselves, then both the bully and the victim will be suspended, and within a week or two, they'll both be back in school. This is not creating a safe environment. And as I've knocked on doors and spoken to folks, there are bullying horror stories throughout the district. So this is a problem that this new school board is really going to have to work on to address.
Right. Thank you both. Our next question comes from a teacher in your district, and let's go to that right now.
Good afternoon. My name is Jennifer DeFer, and I'm an ESL specialist at Eastridge Elementary School. Good educators make knowing the issues facing families, their students, and other teachers a priority to meet the comprehensive needs of each stakeholder to best serve as teachers. How will each of you familiarize yourself with the teachers, students, and schools within your district and tailor your policymaking to meet those needs? Thank you.
All right. Our thanks to Jennifer DeFer for that question, and Larry Groan, you'll go first.
Well, it's an excellent question, especially in terms of exceptional education. You know, I've taught in three states and eight different schools in seven different districts, and I've only seen, for example, special education work in one school out of 18 years. I, I do think we need more special education professionals. I think we're filling the void with substitutes who don't have the proper training, so it becomes glorified babysitting. I'm retired. I will be a full-time school board member. It's my intent to be in each and every one of my district's four schools every week to where I am readily available to administrators, teachers, and students especially, and know that they have a voice on the school board. So that's the same thing that I did as a city council person. It was a full-time job. That's what it will be for me. So I will address those issues. I've already started those conversations with administrators and teachers in the Eastridge schools.
All right. Larry, thank you very much. Katie, your response?
So I, too, plan to be in the building as often as possible. I have three school-aged children, so I would be able to come to the schools as much as possible to make it a full-time job. So how do we, how do we get those supports to those SEL teachers, is what I'm hearing? I think that each school board member needs to listen to the teachers in their area, and so the teachers can tell what they need, whether that is more aids in their classroom or more resources or whatever it is to keep those teachers.
Katie, thank you very much. Larry, you as well. And we've heard a lot recently about an exodus of teachers from the classroom. It's not just a Hamilton County issue. That's a national issue. We know that a great, supportive teacher in every classroom is critical to the success of students. So in Hamilton County, how do you propose retaining quality teachers? Is this going to require a pay raise, fringe benefits, or you have other ideas? And Katie, you go first on this one.
Well, I do not think that teachers get paid enough anywhere, and I don't think this will ever be solved. But first, we have to look at why teachers are, we're having this teacher shortage. Teachers are overwhelmed. They do too much. They are the nurse. They are the psychologist. In some cases, they are the parent. So retaining the teachers, it's not necessarily about money because there are so many other outside factors right now with criticisms from society and judgment from social media that we didn't have in the past. So we just need to give the quality teachers the resources that they need because we can't afford to lose those quality teachers. And the job needs to be competitive.
Larry, how are you going to retain quality teachers?
Well, the, the teachers in Hamilton County have actually had a 14% pay raise in the last, say, four to six years. The school board has, has really been putting a lot of money forward for that. But I still think we're, we're not, we've been listening to school board candidates and members talk about putting money in the classroom for years. And I don't think we're actually doing that. I don't think we're putting the money in the classroom. I don't think we're actually spending the money in the school for those who actually support, who work in each and every school, who actually support the teachers. So yes, I think there's, there's room for improvement in terms of pay scale. Now, I have 247 college credits, and I never got paid more than $53,000 a year. So I can completely understand the idea about salary increases. But this school board is, is really, in the last two terms, it's really been trying to address that issue. But the biggest issues among teachers are the lack of administrative support, the lack of respect and discipline in the schools. And just as, as my opponent referred to, the schools have been tasked with, with things that the mission of schools has never been about. Mission of schools is education. It's not about trying to be a social change instrument. It's not about solving all the problems of modern-day society. That can only be solved by individual families in their individual homes. So we need to get, we need to be able to retain teachers because of discipline. I've spoken personally to five teachers who have quit, one with 21 years' experience from Eastridge High School that says, "I can't stand the lack of discipline and the lack of administrative support." So if we're going to turn this thing around, we have to address the bullying, the discipline issues, the lack of enforcement of our behavior codes. And you should just take a look at the student, the teacher surveys that are on the Department of Education website.
I believe I heard the whistle there, so thank you both for your response. Allison?
Okay, and just before we move forward for both of the candidates, to reduce any confusion, we're only going to do the time sound at the end of the one minute if you reach the one minute. So if you don't hear it, you didn't reach the one minute. All right. So next, we are going to hear from cadets Marie and Ashley, who are students in your district. So please make sure your volume is turned up as they are soft-spoken and they're a little difficult to hear.
Hello, we are the representatives from Eastridge High School. I am Marie Juninas, and I am Ashley Cruz. And today, we are here to express some of our concerns regarding some of these school buildings. Given the recent rebuilding of Tyner Academy and Tyner Middle Academy, and the amount of time it took for action to be taken, as a collective, how will you improve the facilities and learning environments of our students, specifically the districts with older buildings?
Okay, and the question will go to you first, Larry.
A great question. There are at least 27 schools in our district that were built before 1998. This is a can that has been kicked down the road even before the 1997 Union of the City and County Schools. This can't continue. It was, it was a good plan to move CSLA out to a, to Lakeside Elementary School out of 58. That saved the district millions of dollars. We're now in the process of purchasing the old, the Cigna Insurance Building behind Walmart on Gun Barrel. We're going to divide the East Brainerd Elementary School into a K-2 school and turn the new facility, which probably is going to save the district probably $24 or $30 million in construction, and turn that into a grade three through five. In terms of Eastridge schools in particular, yes, I think the district needs to do more in terms of capital budget and even the general budget in putting more money into maintenance for these schools. Just before the budget was approved, matter of fact, the night the budget was approved, the school board found out it was going to get an additional $17.4 million. And they didn't put a dime in, into maintenance. We've got 750,000 square feet of building space that needs to be taken care of, and we have lots of issues to discuss on this new school board.
Did you hear the whistle? So we're going to move on and give Katie a chance to answer that question. Thank you.
All right. Recently, Tucker McLendon, who is currently on the school board, got pictures about the issues in schools, the infrastructure issues in schools. So they were able, able to itemize the things that needed work, and they prioritized those things in able, in order to figure out what needed to be done. So they had to prioritize the funding. But yeah, things like the Cigna building being bought, we have to do things like think outside the box and try to find more properties like that. Recently, I got an email about the water in my son's school having too much lead in it, which no parent should ever have an email like that. We can't send our children to school with the roofs crumbling on their heads and without clean water to drink or clean air to breathe. So how do we fix these issues? We, we fix the water issues by filtering the water. And we, we continue to put Band-Aids on things because we don't have enough funding for these things. So I would work with the county commission to get more funding for these things so we can fix them when they are in the most need so they don't end up costing more money later.
I would like to rebut that.
Okay. You have 30 seconds to rebut.
Well, the school board years ago had money, extra money in its maintenance budget, and they stripped that money out for no other purpose. When you get an additional $7.5 million from state sales taxes and you do not put a dime of it into, into the maintenance budget, but then you talk for 45 minutes, which the school board did, about asking the county commission for $40 million over four years, that's ludicrous. You, we, we have to put our money, which is 52% of the entire budget, of county budget for next year. We have to put our money where our mouth is. And this school board needs to put more of our general funds into that account before we ever ask the county commission for money because we have a record of not following through on money that was given to us. So yes, there were 808 samples taken out of 27 schools, and only 12 samples showed lead. And the school district has said that those facilities were shut down, and the repairs would be made and the water tested before school opened in August.
All right. Moving on to the next question. Tennessee has been in the national spotlight for book bans and challenges. The Hamilton County School Board has a book review committee formed to, quote, "review reading material content concerns and explore options available to address those concerns," unquote. Where do you stand on efforts to regulate what books students are reading or have access to? Katie, you are up first.
All right. I think we need to trust our librarians and our teachers who are taught to, to put the appropriate materials on the shelves. Our librarians have to have a master's degree to have their job. So there is also a component where the parents can say if the child is allowed to check books out from the library or not. As far as this goes, I think that we have to trust the administration and the people that we have, we have as teachers and librarians, and we also have to trust our children and communicate with them so they will know what's appropriate.
Okay. Larry?
Well, this is where my opponent and I are going to sharply disagree. I think that school librarians are at a totally different standard than public librarians. The school is not, this is K through 8. That environment is not a place to be talking about gender and sex. And I have, I have a copy of the book. It's perfectly normal. That was in, I believe, eight of our middle schools. The book's pornographic. No, we can't, we can't allow these types of books. We have to have some say over the type of books that are, especially younger children are exposed. We have to have some say over the type of books that are, um, especially younger children are exposed to. And no, I don't trust our school librarians. In a lot of cases, these are classroom sets that have been ordered and just show up at the school without the principal or the administration even knowing. So there has to be, there has to be some standard that we follow.
Right, thank you.
Can I say something?
You have thirty seconds for an optional rebuttal.
Okay, well, I am sorry to our Hamilton County School librarians who had to hear that. Um, the material that is in our libraries um, is appropriate. Um, I don't, I and if some, if my child were to bring home a book that I thought was not appropriate, I would take it away. And this goes back to the parents having the relationship with the teachers and the administrators and the librarians at the school.
All right, let's move on. The Tennessee Higher Education Commission recently shared that in line with the rest of Tennessee, we have seen an eleven percent drop in the college-going rate for Hamilton County students over the last five years. In the Chattanooga two-point-oh education equity survey that you both responded to in recent days, you were asked what steps you would support the school board taking to ensure that low-income students and students of color attend college and earn degrees at the same rate as their peers. I'm going to quote from each of your responses. Larry, you stated that, quote, "having a goal for all students of color or any colored student to attend college is unproductive and unrealistic," unquote. Katie, in your written response, you said, quote, "students from low-income backgrounds will inherently need additional supports to attend college and earn college degrees," unquote. So the question to both of you is, as the college-going rate is declining, does the school board have a role in ensuring that Black, Hispanic, and Native American children, among others, can attend college at the same rate as their peers? Does the school board have a role in that? Larry, this question goes to you first.
Well, I think some of that impact might be the impact of our future-ready institutes. Uh, we have hundreds of students involved in twelve schools and twenty-six different institutes. This is like VOTEC on steroids. That's what future-ready institutes are because of all the technology advancements that have taken place in the last thirty years. So we have, we have hundreds of students enrolled in these institutes. Um, you can easily get those numbers from the future-ready department uh, of Hamilton County School. I don't know what impact that is going to have, but they're, good heavens, a hundred and forty-three, seventy, twenty-five, hundred and sixty-eight, forty-seven, twenty-eight. Those are the number of graduating seniors that were in some of these programs. So I think, David, this is probably going to have an impact. But here, we've got future-ready institutes that are going to enable students to walk out of high school and into jobs that pay fifty, sixty, seventy thousand dollars a year to start with no student debt. You know, I, I don't think college is for everyone. And I think our future-ready institutes are already proving that.
All right, uh, Katie, that was kind of a long question, but basically we're asking, does the school board have a role in ensuring Black, Hispanic, and Native American children attend college at the same rate as their peers? Your turn.
The school board needs to make sure that all opportunities are available to all students, no matter their background or their, their socioeconomic background or anything else. Um, so yes, not all students want to go to college, so there are these future-ready programs. Um, but as far as the opportunity gap goes, we need to acknowledge that it exists, and we need to meet students where they are so we can communicate with them and offer them additional support. Um, like the dual enrollment programs, and we need to, we need to support the whole child in school.
Thank you both. Allison?
Okay, the ability to read on level in third grade is often cited as one of the greatest predictors of on-time high school graduation. Hamilton County's three poorest performing schools for third-grade literacy with proficiency rates of five point nine to eight point three percent serve large populations of students of color. While its three best-performing schools with proficiency rates of seventy-three point seven to eighty-one point seven percent serve primarily white students. How should the school board address disparities such as these? Katie, you are first.
Yeah, um, well, I have, I have been to some of the summer reach programs and seen that they are beneficial. Um. But when we're talking about um, improving literacy, uh, we, we have the preschool programs that are available through Hamilton County Schools um, that are very important. We need to make sure that the children are, the students are learning to comprehend as well as to decode words. Um, so early literacy, I think, is very beneficial here. Um. Yeah, so we need to make sure that children are getting everything they need from the ground up.
Chris, Larry, your turn to answer.
Well, literacy is extremely important. Um, you know, my campaign slogan is, is camp, is curriculum matters. And when uh, when only thirty-six percent on the average of our students uh, can read at grade level, and this goes all the way from third grade through the eleventh grade, uh, and the, and the percentage ranges, uh, ranges from the abominable twenty point nine percent of eighth graders can't read at grade level uh, to as high as forty-five percent at the eleventh grade. We've got a serious problem. Although we've, we've seen gains in some areas and some places, um, it's not good enough or fast enough based upon what's going to be required by the, the state legislature. Uh, and our math scores are not much better. Uh, just over thirty-six percent of all of our students can do math at grade low. And yeah, there's some bright spots, but uh, I think our curriculum needs a total review. Um, and it, it, it not working, it's just not working. And um, we have to address that issue. And equity is not an issue in this case, and I'll address that later.
All right, any rebuttal, Katie?
Um. Well, he's, he's talking about curriculum matters. Yes, I agree, the curriculum does matter, but also the state decides the curriculum. So it's not up to the school board to change the curriculum. School board has no control over the curriculum.
And Larry?
I need to rebut that, that's totally incorrect. The school, the, the uh, State Board of Education has committees that determine our curriculums. For example, right now, the state is asking for uh, public comment on the entire social studies curriculum, third through twelfth grade, because they're rewriting it. Um, the, this, the State Department of Education puts out textbooks and certain curriculums, for example, the reading curriculum, there were three different curriculums that were put forth. And the school board decides which of those three uh, we might select, but in fact, there's one school district in the state of Tennessee that totally rejected all three and chose their own. So the school board has total control over the curriculum. That's, that's one of their jobs. You know, they only have four jobs. And one of them is to choose policy, do the curriculum, hire the superintendent, and, and approve the budget. So that's just wrong.
All, all right, we could go back and forth on this for a while, but I think you both had your say. And that's the last regular question, so to speak, but we're not quite finished. This little catch-all category we have here enables each of you to ask the other a question. And while it's obvious that you two agree on many key issues, there are several others you don't. So by allowing each of you to ask this question, um, this will give you a chance to address anything that's been said or done during the campaign or during this debate. It's your chance to uh, put the heat on your opponent. So here we go. You have a, um, you have, each, each of you will have a chance to ask a question, and then one minute to respond. Larry, you go first. What's your question for Katie?
My question for Katie is, who are you? Um, where do you stand on the important issues? Um, uh, you haven't had mentioned a single thing about budget. Uh, you haven't mentioned uh, the teaching of curriculum race, uh, critical race theory or diversity, equity, and inclusion. Uh, you've just barely touched upon uh, salaries. Uh, you seem to not know what discipline issues that we have or what restorative justice is. And you've mentioned bullying, but the vast majority of, I would say, our constituents in District Eight don't know where you stand on important issues. Who are you?
Well, I don't, I don't think that's very fair to say, to generalize what everybody in District Eight thinks about me. I also don't think it's fair for you to decide what I think and tell other people that. Um, so when you were talking, when I was talking about discipline earlier, and I was saying that every school needs a plan, they do not have, Hamilton County School has a plan. Um, that is, some of the things in it are no tolerance issues. And I think that it is not communicated well with the parent about what this means. So today I spoke with, um, the principal at Eastridge Element, I mean, at East Brainerd Elementary School, who is an expert on this. She has a doctorate degree and she, she knows how every teacher needs a support system and able to, um, to discipline their, their students. Um. So I, I, I am not sure what exactly the question is here, but I am Katie Perkins, and I am a mom, and my intentions for running for school board is to make schools better and safer for my children and for all the children of this community, because this is my community where I grew up and where my grandmother lived and my great-grandmother lived and where my mother grew up.
All right, turnabout is fair play. Katie, you get to ask Larry Grun anything you want to, and Larry will have a minute to respond.
All right, here is my question. The Hamilton County School Board passed its educational equality policy in twenty-twenty-one. It states that every student in Hamilton County School should have the opportunity to receive an excellent public education regardless of the community in which they live, the school they attend, or the socioeconomic or demographic factors of their household. Do you believe that this policy is important, and how will you ensure this happens? As you also want to, to dismantle the office of, of equity. And you, you stated that, um, you cannot be tasked with solving socioeconomic disparities. So the question is, do you believe this policy is important?
Of course I believe this policy is important, but here's, here's a fact. Um. Woodmore Elementary uh, gets thirteen thousand, got thirteen thousand four hundred dollars per student last year. Um, other schools in the same demographic got ninety-five hundred dollars per student, but vastly outs, uh, outperformed some of our other schools. So uh, the issue of providing students with the resources that they need to be successful in, in, at least in terms of dollars and, and others that were put in front of uh, these students at Woodmore. And I personally know the bus driver at, at Woodmore, and I've been in Woodmore myself uh, as a city councilman. Uh, this is a multifaceted problem that has to be addressed. Uh, do I believe that uh, our school district needs a, an, an office of equity? No, I do not. Uh, I think that is a unconscionable growth of the central office administration that uh, has, has grown already in, in the last three years from twenty-eight employees to what's going to be forty and a half this year. Although uh, a, a good portion of those are counselors. So we, you can't just answer this in one question. But no, I think that all of our central office uh, staff and the number of administrators we have needs to be uh, reined in and put in check and those funds put into our schools. Especially for those schools who have the greatest need because of socioeconomic and cultural issues in those schools.
Great. All right, thank you, candidates. That brings an end to our questions for tonight's debate. Um, now we will conclude with closing statements from each candidate. Larry, please give us your closing statement. You have two minutes.
Well, I, I've stated all along that, um, we, we have a situation in Hamilton County Schools that, um, just has been kicked down the road for twenty-five years, ever since we united the, the city and the county. Uh, we have huge maintenance issues. Uh, we have crumbling schools. Um, and yet we have a four-hundred-and-fifty-six-million-dollar budget for the next school year. Uh, we have literacy rates and, and math competency rates that although improving, are not improving anywhere close to what uh, I think the taxpayers and parents in the community expects from our schools. Uh, we have a huge discipline problem. If, I don't care how good of a teacher you are, if, if you don't have discipline in the schools and structure, especially for elementary uh, school and middle school students, and their expectations of, um, what your consequences of bad behavior, then you will never have a, a safe learning environment. Um, I'm very concerned about the association between social-emotional learning, uh, EL education, uh, both of which were started by the Harvard Graduate School of Education. Um, I, I don't think Hamilton County um, and most residents are aware of the influence of, of Harvard in our school district. Uh, so, and we have a lot of issues. And uh, we need to get back to academics, and we need to get back to knowledge-based education instead of evidence-based education, uh, which is pushed by our, our EL education, a language arts curriculum, uh, which is a, which is an organization that says it's firmly committed to equity and anti-racism uh, and promotes moral, uh, moral relativity within its program. So now, as the school board, we have to get a handle on all this.
Correct, and I heard the whistle. Katie?
Yeah, so I just want to say thanks to Chattanooga two-point-oh, Chattanooga Times Free Press and Channel Three for doing this debate. Um, we cannot send our children to schools that are unsafe, and I refuse to sit here and be distracted by theories that aren't even allowed to be taught at Hamilton County Schools. I have been out talking to teachers and parents and students and administrators about what the issues that are facing our schools today, today are, and they are this. Uh, we are facing a huge teacher shortage, so we need to hold on to those quality teachers, and I'm willing to listen to the needs of them. And I am willing to support these teachers, however they need it. Whether it be resources or more aides in the building, we need to make sure that they have autonomy in their classrooms. We also have a lack of support staff for our teachers, and I'm committed to getting more teachers, aides, and health counselors into the buildings. We also need to look at the infrastructure. The admin, and the administration knows this, and our community recognizes this. We can't send our kids to school with the building falling on their heads. We can't send them to school with unsafe water or unclean air. I am dedicated to educating our students for their future and not for my past. So I am Katie Perkins, and I hope that if you live in District Eight, you vote for me on this fourth. Thanks.
All right, thank you to Katie Perkins and Larry Grun, and best wishes to you both. One of you will be supporting the schools on the school board. One of you will do it from outside the school board, but we know that your concern for the schools is, is certainly genuine, and we appreciate you putting yourselves on the ballot this year. And we'll hand it back over to Carrie Randolph with Chattanooga two-point-oh.
Thank you, David. Um, thank you, candidates, um, for participating, and again, for your interest in serving in this very important role for our community. Thank you to our moderators and to our co-hosts, Local Three News and the Chattanooga Times Free Press. Um, thank you to Ashley and Marie, the students- the students from East Ridge High, and Jennifer Defer for their excellent questions. And last but not least, thank you to our viewers. If you missed the first part of tonight's debate, well, of course you did, but you'll see it soon. The video recording will be available later this evening on Local Three, and tomorrow we'll be right back here at 7:00 PM for the District 10 School Board Debate between Fay Robinson, Jeff Krim, and Christine Essex. Don't forget that early voting starts this Friday, July 15, and ends July 30. The deadline to request an absentee ballot is July 28. I encourage you to head over to CHATT, that's C-H-A-T-T, the number two dot org slash vote, where you'll find more information about the candidates, the upcoming election on August 4, and how to request your absentee ballot. In closing, 2022 has been another trying year for our community. Strong leadership on the Hamilton County School Board is needed now more than ever, as we continue to work toward a Hamilton County Schools that is the best school district in the state of Tennessee. And so I thank you for your engagement on this critical topic. Have a good evening and stay safe out there.
Thank you, everyone.